Closed captioning provided by Beaufort County.
All right, I'd like to call the caucus meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting was advertised in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda for the caucus.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Tavernick. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Councilman Glover. Do we have anything for council member discussion at this point? I don't think we do. We're going to skip that on the agenda. Yes ma'am?
You can carry the motion.
Oh, we need to have a motion. We need to have a vote on the motion, yes.
Okay.
All right. A motion to approve the agenda was made and second, do I have, without objection, everyone by raising your hand?
Online.
Online. The agenda was approved for the caucus. Number five is council member discussion. I don't think we have anything to come forward for that that we're aware of at this time. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. We have a need for executive session. I'll read both of those. Under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2 and 30-4-70A1, to receive legal advice on matters covered by the attorney-client privilege and to discuss issues related to the employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body, that is, the Bluffton Township Fire District. B is under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the advice relates to pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. That is UPF Litigators Ultra Process Food Litigation. And if there would be any matters after we come out of executive session, that will be done when we come back. All right, we have a motion in a sec. Do we have a motion in a second?
No, we have a motion.
All right, make a motion by Councilman Glover to go into executive session? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. By show of hands, we go into executive session at this time?
Mm-hmm.
And that is unanimous, okay? Thank you. We will go into executive session and when we come out, there may or may not be items. Thank you.
There's a smash to right field. That ball is way back. Gone, Nico Lang. So Beaufort County, home run, shot over the right field.
Looking for a great career opportunity? Beaufort County, South Carolina, has several job openings in areas that will match your skill set. We're looking for emergency medical professionals, detention center officers, stormwater and ground crews, aircraft mechanics, alcohol and drug specialists, medical professionals, IT specialists, library assistants, bus drivers, and much more. Beaufort County offers competitive salaries, best-in-class benefits, and a positive work environment. Apply today at beaufortcountysc.gov.
This evening, we're going to call this meeting to order. Can we do any better? Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yes, I'm going to do the invocation tonight? No, we're going to stand up. I got to find a piece of paper first. Okay, everyone, please stand up. Today, we are going to recognize military children. I am a military child, and we have, I think, 18 or 19 military children here tonight. So I chose something that Pat Conroy had written in a book as an introduction. Everyone knows who Pat Conroy is. He was a military child, the great Santini. And he wrote this, and I'm going to paraphrase it. Because of military life, and this is Pat Conroy's quote, "I'm a stranger everywhere and a stranger nowhere. I can engage anyone in a conversation, become well liked in a matter of seconds, yet there's a distance that I can never recover. The word goodbye will always be a killing thing to me, but so is the word hello. I am pathetic in my attempts to make friends with everyone I meet, from cab drivers to bellhops to store clerks. I have become an expert at spotting outsiders, yet when I walk away from my best friends, I rarely think of them again. I can close the door and not look back." We would like to bow your heads, and we would like to thank the military children. They're fine and resourceful, who are strangers in every town they've entered. Thanking them for their extraordinary service to their country, for the sacrifices they make over and over again to the United States of America, to its ideals of freedom, its preservation, and to its everlasting honor. That's from Pat Conroy. Thank you. Okay, tonight, this meeting was advertised in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I'll confirm that with Ms. Brock. And at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Chairwoman, can you hear us in the back? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, nobody can hear us in the back at all?
Okay.
They're both the same. Both the mics are the same.
Hey, this one, this one seems to be... Is this clear? Could you hear me back there? Clear? And you can't hear up front?
All right, they're turning up this one.
I don't think they can.
Is it a little bit better? Okay. It's a little bit louder, too.
No?
Oh. He's working in the back. We just... There you go.
Okay, we had a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second by Councilman Bartholomew. All in favor by show of hands to approve the agenda? And we have three people from county council online. Mr... We have Mr. Passment, Ms. Kellin, and Mr. Logan.
Can you, can you hear us there?
On the agenda is the approval of the minutes from April 9th. Also, that was the county council budget workshop. That's good. April 14th, the caucus and county council. Do I have a motion to approve those sets of minutes?
So, I'll second it.
All right, we had a motion by Councilman Dawson, second by Councilman Bartholomew. Without discussion, by show of hands, to approve the minutes. All right. What? Oh, we didn't vote? Okay. So we had one not, one not approve the minutes, all right?
He gave you a thumbs up.
Now he did. All right, good. At this time, we will have the administrator's report by Mr. Mike Moore.
This is going to be up close and personal.
Good evening, Madam Chair Council. We have a few announcements tonight. First off, I'd like to start with some recognition. We've got Jeffrey Smalls. You're good right there.
You're on the menu there.
So I'm going to read a little bit about Mr. Smalls. He's Public Works Roads and Drainage Assistant Superintendent. He's been with the county for 38 years. Since September 8th, 1987, is that correct? To April 25th, 2025. We recognize him on his retirement this past Friday on the 25th. Since he began his career in public works in 1987, he's been an essential part of the Roads and Drainage Division, bringing unmatched skill, reliability, and commitment to every aspect of the job. Whether operating motor graders, backhoes, excavators, bush hogs, or just about any piece of equipment in the field, he has done it all with excellence and pride. His work has helped keep our roads smooth, our ditches clear, and our right of ways well-maintained. But his role extends far beyond operating equipment. He's been a steady hand and source of knowledge and guidance to those around him, which we appreciate. On a personal note, what sets him apart even more is the connection he's built with the community. Mr. Jeff is well-known on St. Helena Island and a trusted figure, always ready to lend a hand or solve a problem. If something needed fixing, everyone knew you were the man to call and jump. Since he's already started his retirement, he leaves behind a legacy of hard work, friendship, and excellence that will not be forgotten. Thank you for your service, your dedication, and the difference you've made. Congratulations on your retirement. I do have some.
That's right.
Three years.
No comments, but we'll continue on.
He doesn't want to stay and not retire?
No. Okay, next, we're going to recognize from Public Works Stormwater Infrastructure Evelyn Sutton.
Evelyn. Oh, here she comes.
So Evelyn's a utility coordinator, been with the county for 17 years. She coordinates all utilities. This is a big job for all the crews, audits quantities for projects, and creates maps and updates, GIS maps.
I don't think they can hear.
Something unique, Navy Reserve, 30 years Navy, 20 years plus, and she plans on retiring soon, so I wish you best of luck there. So thank you so much. Okay, next, we're going to recognize our County Veterans Affairs Director Caroline Furman, who's been named one of 205 Department of Veterans Affairs Centers for Women Veterans Trailblazers. I know she's here somewhere.
Oh, Caroline. Where is she?
She was in the hallway.
She was in the hallway, yeah.
Somebody let her through, please.
As she's coming through, I'll start to read this, so...
Oh, there she is. I see her head.
Got an escort, looks like.
She's got to get through the gauntlet.
Come on, Caroline.
There she is.
There she is, okay.
Okay, so she's in the room, I'll start reading. The Center for Women Veterans recently announced their selection of 28 women veterans for the 2025 Department of Veteran Affairs Center for Women Veterans Trailblazers, quote, "Women Forging a Path," end quote initiative. Beaufort County Veterans Affairs Director Caroline Furman has been chosen as one of the 28 women veterans to be honored with this national award in recognition. From the website, the Center for Women Veterans is proud to announce the Women's Veterans 2025 Women Veteran Trailblazers Initiative. They define a veteran trailblazer as a woman who has served and separated from the service and made an impact by enhancing lives of other veterans, veterans' families, or veteran caregivers. Congratulations.
I want to thank you all for coming out here tonight. Just kidding. I couldn't do any of this without the support of Beaufort County, the administration, county council, and especially Adra Entonachi.
Next, I'd like to recognize Earth Day from last week, which was last Friday. The 2025 Beaufort County Earth Day event was a record-breaking success. We had more than 580 volunteers representing 24 local partner organizations and over 200 Beaufort County employees. They came together to clean up litter along 60 miles of roadways. In a total, they collected an impressive 9,000 pounds of litter. That's great numbers. Congratulations to all of you all. Following the cleanup, the volunteers enjoyed lunch, a ceremony that featured remarks from yours truly, the Beaufort County Beautiful Board Chairman, and representatives from our state partner Palmetto Pride. The event also showcased 12 local environmental education booths, including county departments such as solid waste and recycling, mosquito control, parks and recreation, and passive parks, highlighting the many ways we can all contribute to a cleaner, greener Beaufort County. So once again, congratulations. My last announcement is after publicly advertised the county attorney position, it's my pleasure tonight to announce that our own Brian Holbert is going to be the next county attorney. We're grateful to have his knowledge and experience on the team. He brings an impressive record of community and military service. He's admitted to practice in the states of South Carolina, Ohio, and active, admitted as a member of the bars of the U.S. Supreme Court, U.S. District Court of South Carolina, and South Carolina. He's called Beaufort County Home since 1998. He and his wife Catherine have two sons, two daughters, two daughters-in-laws, and three granddaughters. So congratulations. Subject to any questions, that concludes my remarks.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, now, this is the fun part. If all the military children could come up front, along with Colonel, Colonel Bain and Lieutenant Colonel Lyon.
Come on down.
Right on, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, probably a good time. Come on, look a little more excited. You can do it. Look at the little one.
Ms. Brock, do we have the proclamation?
It should be right in here.
It's right here. I'd like to introduce, Colonel Bain is from Paris Island, and Lieutenant Colonel Lyon is from the air station. We're so glad you could come here tonight with us. Are any of these yours? Only a couple?
He's like, "I'm out of here."
And Lieutenant, if you'd introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Sergeant Lindsey Cruz. I am the combat officer.
Okay, thank you.
This is Jeremy.
So glad he could come. We're so glad y'all could be here, and love the purple shirts because it's Purple Month, right? Yeah. How many of you were born on a military base? Do you know? I was. Were you? Okay. You're special. You know that. There's a lot of famous people who were in the military, like, their parents were in the military, like Tom Cruise, I think, and there's quite a few others. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. I'd like to thank Dee Simpson and Caroline Furman for making arrangements for this, and Kim Wiley, too, and David Trail. Whereas since 1986, Marine Corps installations around the world have celebrated the month of the military child throughout the month of April, recognizing the sacrifices and applauding the courage of the military children. And whereas each day, military children undergo unique challenges which they face with resilience and dignity beyond their years, and whereas military families move on an average every two to three years, impacting military children through changing schools and support networks, and whereas it is essential to recognize that military children make significant contributions to the country while dealing with uncertainty and concern for their parents during extended hours and long deployments, and whereas the family responsibility that military children accept takes courage and strength as they serve the nation along with their parents, and whereas the month of the military child reinforces this concept and allows us to take stock and recognize that our service members' children also play an important role in the support of their parents and thus the nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim April 2025 as the month of the military child, dated the 28th of April 2025. I'd like to present this.
Do I need to use the mic, or can you guys hear me in the back?
A bad voice, sir. A bad voice.
All right, yeah, so if you can't hear anything with the mic in the back. So, hey, so Colonel Matt Bain, I'm the commanding officer of Air Force Force Battalion, Marine Corps, Corps Depot, Paris Island. On behalf of General Williamson, just wanted to thank the county of Beaufort for all the support to military kids. Really, this is, I lost count how many duties I should have, but I was thinking about, this is two of my seven children, so, yeah, David and Robert here. David's 14. This is the eighth place he's lived in his life. So he's, he's like minorly famous at Robert's Falls playing football and baseball, and then Robert played for the Beaufort Wildcats football team. So we really loved our reception here in Beaufort. Been here about two years now. Just my family personally, great churches, great schools, great family support, and then support from the local government that makes it easy for my family of seven kids to balance, like, homeschool, hybrid education system that we have going on. So thank you so much. It's a pleasure to run the depot here, and I'm going to turn it over to my brother in arms here from the air station to hold this while you talk.
Thank you. Colonel Chris Lane. Us, what means to our family, this is probably the first place that we've gone. Back to the schools, the churches, the parks are amazing. My kids go to what they call Grass Hill Playground every single weekend. So they love it here, and I'm really honored and thank you for all that you do for us as military members.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, kids. Thank you.
Nice face there, yeah.
Thank you. Gerald.
Yes, he is.
Next, we have Councilman Gerald Dawson is going to do another proclamation.
Mom, thank you. You, too. Thank you for being here.
Colonel...
Safe. Get through the gauntlet. That was nice. Very nice.
Back again.
How you doing? Good. Colonel Grant, on behalf of the, all the National Correctional Officers throughout the country, the state of the United States, I want to read this proclamation to give thanks to all the National Correctional Officers for the dedication and the professional work they do, caring for our inmates in the facilities throughout the nation. So this proclamation reads, whereas in 1987, Congress passed and President Ronald Reagan signed Public Law 991611, proclaiming the first week of May as National Correctional Officers Week, and whereas the operation of correctional and detention facilities represents a crucial component of our criminal justice system, and whereas correctional officers play a vital role in protecting the rights of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas correctional personnels are responsible for the safety and dignity of human beings charged to their care, and whereas correctional personals, personnel work under demanding circumstances and face dangers in their daily, daily work lives, often sacrificing personal and family time to provide a necessary but thankful unrecognized and behind-the-scenes service to the public, whereas the staff of Beaufort County Detention Center has continually demonstrated their skill and professionalism in running one of the finest facilities in the state. Now, therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th National Correctional Officers Week, dated this 28th day of April 2025, signed by Alice Howard, Chair of Beaufort County Council. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to thank council and Beaufort County for this proclamation and for acknowledging us. Like he said, we rarely get the acknowledgement that we deserve. The officers, they work long hours, and they're away from their families a lot. And I would like to thank the community, because without the community, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, because you come in to the detention center on your time, and you speak with the inmates, and that's what they need, just a word. And I appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thanks for coming again.
Okay, many of you are here for this. Next one on the agenda, citizen comments. We only have 30 minutes. I know that we asked if some people would like to consolidate, but that, we didn't, so we're going to start at the top of the list and go until we run out of time. First person on the list, if you want to talk less than three minutes, that's fine, because that'd give us more chance for other people to talk. First on the list is Queen Quet.
Good evening, County Council. Good evening, St. Helena family. Glad you for there, one more again. Thank God for this show evening. One thing we learned when we've been growing up on this island and things like that, it went on to know better, want to do better. So back in the 1990s and things like that, if people didn't even crack it, they'd be no better, because they'd be done shum. If it don't see, we get it area, golf course and things like that, every dude, we at sea islands. So they come up with this, I think, on the chilling call the CPO. So for those who are comers, y'all ain't been here, it was very clear to us what was already happening around St. Helena Island back in the 1990s. We'd already seen it happening since the 1950s, and those gated areas and the proliferation of golf courses and resorts was not helping with cultural sustainability. In fact, we saw environmental destruction, is what I call it, and degradation. We've witnessed how our seafood industry has started to decline. We've witnessed places that were closed off from us, where we literally nap on, where we have to nap on to stay alive over all of these years, just in my lifetime alone. And so it's been vital to me to be able to contribute back to my island by serving as the chair of the CPO Committee more than one time and currently, and to say that downzoning is not a part of the plan of the Cultural Protection Overlay District. Part of the plan of the Cultural Protection Overlay District is to make sure every time there's a comprehensive plan that we hear from the citizens of Beaufort County, not every other county. And when it comes to St. Helena Island, it's vital and important to hear from those who been here and just come here this now. And there are a lot of people who want to contribute tonight who don't live on St. Helena, aren't native to St. Helena. Those who are native to St. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[622.12]
Septic tanks and the boat docks in Village Creek. Oftentimes, you'll hear people complain that it's going to negatively impact the sea life and kill the crabs, when in all actuality, according to my research, I have not found anything to support that, right? In fact, it's the exact opposite of what will be allowed for him to develop unity to our zoning plan. So, I represent a youth group, and what I see is an opportunity for the underserved, less affluent children in this neighborhood to be able to have a place of their own, in their own community, to be able to exercise their dreams and to be able to practice whatever it is that they profess to be, whether it be coding, whether it be sports, whether it just be a place for them to be mentored and tutored. We are denying them that opportunity should we turn down this downzoning plan. So, I ask that you look at these children in this room and tell them why it is that we are choosing to turn down this offer.
All right.
So, thank you so much for this opportunity. You guys have a blessed evening.
Okay. Next is Willie Terrell. And then, after him, after him is Michael Curry. I'd like to just make an announcement. Willie Terrell, is he coming up?
Yes, he is.
Okay. I'd like to make an announcement. It appears to me that some of these names were written in the same hand, which is, but the person who is speaking needs to have actually signed up. So, in the future, we will ask you to not sign up, people that you are, if it's not you, you can only sign for that person, okay? Does everyone understand what I'm saying? You can only sign your own name on our signup list, okay? All right, Mr. Terrell. And then, next is Michael Curry, if he can go ahead and work his way up front. Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Again, my name is Willie Terrell. Can y'all hear me in the back? I couldn't hear nothing. My name is Willie Terrell. For those who don't know, I know that there's different opinions on this issue, and I respect everybody's opinion, and also think that everybody from this community deserves to be heard outright. I think that's everybody's right here. Now, let me set the stage and say, I live here. I spend 99.6% of my time on St. Helena. Only time I leave off, I'm going to Harris Teeter or Walmart, and that's about it. The first speaker says, "If you know better, do better," and I think that that's a spot on statement. Also, let me, if you know me, I used to teach, and I like to deal in facts, so let's just take it factually for a second. In 1999, about 9,000 residents, St. Helena was 65% black and 33% white. At our last census, the black population has dwindled to slightly less than 36%. Now, that's facts. So, when you talk about a CPO and what it's designed to do, you gotta open your eyes when it doesn't meet that design. That's it, if it doesn't meet the design. I am pro-CPO, for those who don't know. I think it's a great program. I think it should not be abolished, but strengthened. But if you know better, you do better, and you gotta realize when something comes that meets the objective of that said CPO, and that said CPO has not met that objective since 1999, then you're making a form decision to bring that community closer to the objectives that's already laid out in the CPO. You simply need to do the research. I know that there's a lot of emotionalism here, and I understand that, but you gotta understand, everybody might not grasp the concept of downzoning, or legislations, or CPO, or the impact. But we gotta be mindful to what those impacts, who they concern, and if nobody else, I'm gonna speak for you, because where do you get on your bicycle and ride to a job on St. Helena Island? You probably gonna ride the Willie's, and I can't hire that many people. Oh, yeah, I work here, too. I think it's unfair and it's unfavorable to just dismiss the opinion, hold on, guys. I think it's unfair and it's unfavorable to dismiss the opinion and dismiss the benefits to not look at the facts and make informed and educated decisions with the knowledge that you're given, not just the emotionalism in the room. Guys, this is a great opportunity in front of us to secure a legacy in black and white, something a Beaufort Comprehensive Plan has not done. Read the amendment. You're talking about millions of dollars, and you're talking about opportunities that's gonna be afforded to this community and its residents. Now, as a father who just sent my daughter away, who wanted to stay here, she did not want to go to college, I made her leave. She wanted to work at my, I made her leave, because there's nothing here. Parker's is the biggest employer.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope so. Whoever said that, I would love for her to work on a golf course.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank y'all. Y'all have a good day.
Michael Curry is next. Okay, next, after Michael Curry, is Roy Brown, if he could go ahead and come up to be ready, and then Ariel Terrell.
Good evening, residents. My name is Michael Anthony Curry. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. I'm a 12-year resident of Ladies Island, originally from Baltimore, Maryland. I'm a truck driver, retired, and I was forced back to work by my wife.
Is she here?
I came out of retirement. No, fortunately, she's home, and I happen to reside on a golf course. I live on Pleasant Point Plantation, so she has the luxury of being at home at this particular point in time. I'm saying all of this to say, golf courses and areas of such are wonderful as far as the preservation of the neighborhood, of the community, but most of all for our youth. This is very, very important. I heard someone here tonight say that they felt as though no children should be here. The children are our future. We have a plan for them, and they can and will be represented, and they have every right to be here. What the CCL doesn't want you to know is that the CPO should really stand for captivity, poverty, and oppression. The CCL keeps pushing the CPO to deflect from the logic and the topic at hand. Cultural protection overlay, sounds like it's to protect the culture, but it's only the thing to bring the protection to the CCL's system of control. It keeps the land rich, but cash poor. It shuts the door on modern entrepreneurship and the opportunity in the name of preservation while pushing out our people. What the CCL thinks black business owns means, owning black businesses means, pardon me. Recently, the CCL shamelessly put out a flyer some time ago, saying that Gullah people should still have businesses as long as they stick to what they know in their lanes. Such as things, this disheartens me in such a manner, to grow crops, plant trees, sing songs, cook food, dance for visitors, make art, and storytell. Let's be clear, that's not cultural protection, that's plantation logic. In modern-day equivalent, it's as slavery telling our ancestors, "Feel [bleep], go work your land, house [bleep]."
Sir, yes.
Feed your gloves.
Mr. Curry.
Feed your gloves.
Mr. Curry.
Breastfeed, breastfeed, and entertain the masses' children.
Please, out of order, Mr. Curry. Mr. Curry, you are done.
Yes, ma'am.
You may be seated now.
Understood, ma'am. I thank you for taking the time to hear that.
Mr. Brown is next.
I do apologize if there was any disrespect conveyed. It was not my intent by any means.
All right. All right, calm down.
Good afternoon.
Please.
Listen up, listen up.
All right. I will remind the audience again, no disrespect. Confine yourselves to what you're talking about, be mindful and respectful of others, and address the chairman, and in speaking, avoid any personalities or disrespect. Councilman Glover, did you want to say something before we let this next person go?
I'm glad that you stopped the Mr. Curry, because he was truly insulting me. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brown, your time.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here this afternoon. Thank you for listening to us this afternoon. I apologize if some of the words earlier hurt somebody's feelings, I'm sorry. That's not in the intent of what we plan to do. But what I would like to talk about is I see the massed amount of people that show up here this afternoon, and I applaud you for coming out for a reason. But when our children are being killed in the street, our children have psychological problems, our children don't have any recreation, our children need creation, but we come out and fight about a 500-acre tract that belongs to someone else that wants to do what he wants to do with his own property. But you would not come out to defend your own children. Yes, I am saying it. You would not come out to the Sheriff Department to help. You won't come out to the Fire Department to help. You don't volunteer with the Red Cross. You don't do things, yes, I'm military, both Navy and Army. Yes, I serve my country, and I serve my community, and yes, I am from St. Helena Island. Orange Grove, Orange Grove, the Johnson family, I'm a Johnson, if you don't know it. I don't need to tell you my whole history, but that's what it is. We have to fight the battles that we can win. We can win by helping our children be more educated. We can help by telling our children that we fought for them. I listened to a young lady earlier today tell me that you are destroying our way of life by bringing a golf course to St. Helena Island. I am so sorry, you are so wrong. You are destroying your island when you let 156 homes build on the river shore of your island. That tells you with 156 septic tanks going into your river, that will destroy your island. Wake up, culture. I hear you talk about your culture. Your culture is you. You carry your culture with you. Your culture go wherever you go. I've traveled around the country. I've traveled to 15 countries, 49 states. This project is one of the best projects I've seen. I've worked with a group of people in the state of South Carolina. We go around and we find projects that's best for African-American communities. This project is one of the best projects that we have ever worked on. Columbia, South Carolina, we have 15 people that do the same thing that I do. We travel around the country, and we find places that we know that can benefit African-Americans.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. You've run out of time.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Ariel Terrell, and then Isaac Smalls.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I would encourage you, as a chair, to address the community and have them know and understand that they are addressing council and not the audience.
That, you said that very well, Councilman Dawson, I couldn't say it better. You're addressing council, you're not addressing the audience. So, Ariel Terrell is next, and then Isaac Smalls, if Isaac Smalls wants to go ahead and come forward.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ariel Terrell. I'm an honor student at Ladies Island Middle School, and this is my story. My sister is also an honor student. She graduated with a 4.0 GPA, and she wanted to stay home, but my dad says she couldn't because she didn't have the opportunity to stay home. He said she had to go to college or go in the military, so she chose the military. And because there was no opportunity for her to stay here, and I want the opportunity to stay here, how am I supposed to make a change for my community if I don't have the opportunity to make the change in my generation?
Thank you for coming forward. Isaac Smalls. And after Isaac Smalls is Dean Pence. Go ahead.
Good evening, good evening, council. Hello, everyone. A place to grow, a place to dream. I want you to take a moment and imagine a place, a place right here in our community where young people could walk in and feel hope, a place where the sound of bouncing basketballs just isn't a noise, but rhythm. The rhythm of dreams being chased, goals being set, and futures being shaped. That's the power of the multi-purpose recreation center. It's not just about hoops or games. It's about opportunity, it's about exposure, it's about exposure to college coaches, scouts, mentors, role models who walked in the same path and made it out. It's about providing a space where talent gets seen and supported, not wasted or ignored. But beyond the game, it's also about education. Imagine a space where kids could go after school, not just to shoot around, but to get tutored, to study, to learn life skills, where they could grow, not just as athletes, but as students and leaders. A place where potential is nurtured, not lost to the streets. Now, ask yourself, what happens if we don't get this downzoning plan? What are we throwing away? We're throwing away future scholarships, the chance for someone in this room, or someone's son, daughter, cousin, or friend, to be the first in their family to graduate college. We're throwing away confidence, focus, and belonging. We're throwing away the chance to lift each other up. This center is more than just a building, it's a lifeline. It's a foundation for discipline, teamwork, and hope. And if we don't build it, we risk losing a generation of talent, not just athletic talent, but human potential. Let's not let that happen, let's build something that will outlast us, let's build something that gives every kid a shot, not just at basketball, but at a better life. I got a minute, I got a minute left. Also, building the houses, I was just thinking about like how they were saying about our cultures, mess up our culture doing the golf course. Golf course isn't changing any land or anything, it's just there, and it's providing something that could just help every, like, all the young talent after you guys leave us, and you guys are not on this land no more. I don't know why we are holding on to past stuff when we can get a real different, you know, life.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. All right, Dean Pence. Dean Pence is next, and after that is Renee Jenkins, and then next is Craig Reeves.
Good afternoon, my name is Dean Pence. I don't believe you'll have a hard time hearing me. Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Address us, not the audience, yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. The VIPs. I'm not from here, I'm from East Tennessee, dirt poor farmer, tobacco farmer. I gotta know where I come from.
Address us.
Cabbal farmers, sharecroppers, lumbermen, timbermen, moonshiners. That's what we had. We didn't have pants and shoes till we was three or four, and you had to go to church or school. I lived in a car long before it was fashionable. Went in the military, found something to do, but I went in late, I'd already been out in the world. But what the military gave me, it gave us the ability to know something. It made me a hazmat manager for Northern Italy at Aviara Air Base. Golf courses are a good thing, right out here at Paris Islands, one of the best nature preserves you're gonna find in Beaufort County. Plain and simple. I live facing, okay, on the marshes, Johnson Creek, facing Hunting Island. It's a beautiful place to be. Council, Village Creek, one of the first men I met here lived there, and I saw that it was abandoned and fallen to ruin. Now, here is a 500-acre piece of property that, don't call it anything other than a nature preserve. We don't want anything else on Village Creek, can't stand it. Golf courses are self-contained, that's just plain. Make it manageable. More importantly, this cultural center, can you imagine the youth of St. Helena building a shrimp boat as their senior project? I can, because man will make it possible. Make it possible for him, he makes things possible for you. Is Candace Glover here, or Tiger Woods, or Michael Jordan? Who is waiting? What talent lays latent right here on this island that doesn't have an outlet? A young boy told me, "I'm gonna be a shrimp, I like my daddy and his brother and my daddy's daddy." No, you can't do that. We're at St. Helena, lost its culture, one tax buy at a time. Who goes to that courthouse? Speculators, shysters, crooks, flippers, and who loses? The very man and woman out here on St. Helena Island. How do I know that? The one thing that beat me, the military didn't beat me, 26 years, didn't beat me. Nothing beat me until Rule Carrier Association, lifetime member of that organization, okay? It beat me. I couldn't do the job, but I saw every road on St. Helena Island. You wanna do something good, pave David White out here, in Capers Island Circle, and some of this other stuff. I have driven in every mud hole there is. I have been down St. Helenaville Road as far as you can go trying to deliver a package, lost as a D-3. But let me tell you, right out there, life's an opportunity for here. I can just see the children going out one afternoon a week, getting the driving range and getting some use out of that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pence. Thank you.
I think that, hold it, one more, one, one.
You're out of time, sir. You're out of time. Sir, you're gonna have to sit down, you're out of time. Thank you. All right, Renee Jenkins is next.
Thank you.
Those fine are better nations, and come to agreement.
Renee Jenkins. And after her is Mr. Craig Reeves and Brian Polite.
We have to be out of time.
All right, we're gonna run out of time. Is Renee Jenkins not here?
She yielded her time.
She yielded her time, great. All right, Craig Reeves, and then Brian Polite. Craig Reeves.
Craig here.
All right, we're gonna skip you if you don't, come on, Craig. All right, Brian Polite. He, Brian yielded, okay. Marque, M-A-R-Q-U-E.
Marquee.
Marquee. Marquee, tell me, Marquee, say your, all right.
First off, I want to thank you guys for coming out here to hear what we have to say. As y'all can see, I am in support of the CPO, but a lot of my friends and neighbors are wearing green shirts, so that tells you how complex this issue is. The main thing that I want to get a part, get expressed today is that this was carefully, carefully designed. The CPO has gone through rigorous evaluation, reevaluation, and then legislation. The Comprehensive Plan, not one, not two, but three times, three times, we've had to, three times we've had to defend this thing. And three times, guess what? Three times, it's been, three times it's been upheld. Again, the second, the next thing that I would like to point out is that we're constantly being told that this is gonna create so many jobs that's gonna actually compete with Hilton Head. I'm sorry, it's not going to. The level of employment on that island is not going to be able to sustain an entire population. It's not creating affordable housing for people who are looking for affordable housing. It's not creating reasonable jobs that are going to be able to provide for many people. Sure, there are people who will benefit from it, but those will be far and few between. They talk about how it will be an economic engine. Well, guess what? They already said, the people aren't gonna even live here. So, they're not gonna be in our stores, they're not gonna be buying our products, they're not going to be, these things are not true. All we're asking is that if you want to find out what the people want, then put it on a ballot in five years when the Comprehensive Review, the Comprehensive Plan is up for review. Easy, easy peasy. And then, the people who live on St. Helena will have the ability to vote and put their opinion forth. Thank you, I yield my.
Thank you much. All right, we have. All right, you, I'd like to remind you, using the time, we have two more people who we have time to speak. One is, that will be, is it Ivan Glass? Ivan Glover? And then Roosevelt Adams, and that will be it. It's all the time we have, and we have to get on with the other business. We've had a little bit over 30 minutes, so.
First of all, good evening to everyone. I wasn't really planning on sharing a whole lot, I'm still learning a lot, but I do know this, from what I'm hearing tonight, we don't, we need to keep St. Helena the way St. Helena is, to provide for what we have already, to build from what we have. All this extra stuff, we really don't need. A lot of individuals are coming to our community, they're not respecting our community. They can't even drive down a highway without going to the median pass and another car in a rush, going nowhere. I just experienced on Martin Luther King just the other day, a truck passed another car on the highway on Martin Luther King. Now, if I'd have went out, that would have been a head-on collision. If people are gonna come into this community and tell them what we need, respect what we have, build from what we have. We don't need extra. We don't need a golf course. Our golf course is not gonna build a recreational facility for young people in our communities. We have to do that. We don't need extra people to come out of town and say, "This is what we need to better ourselves." We work with what we have. If you give us what we need, we'll build what we have to have for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last is Robert Adams. Dr. Adams, thank you.
Oh, no, it's all good. Good evening, county council. It's wonderful to talk to you tonight, and what I'd like to do is really tell you what I'm for and what Penn Center is for. Penn Center is for the CPO, and it's not something that happened in 2023, 2022, 2025. This is something that happened way back in the 1990s, when we got together and partnered with a number of local NGOs to think about how to preserve the Gullah Geechee culture and how to move this county forward in a way that was about responsible growth. And we believe that still, the CPO is the vision of responsible growth. But also, I want to tell you that, what else I'm for. What else I'm for is I'm for the wonderful relationship that the Penn Center has with the Coastal Conservation League. Unfortunately, many folks have tried to portray the Coastal Conservation League as some sort of carpetbagger, when in actuality, Penn Center members and leaders played a vital part in forming it many decades ago. And we continue to work together in a close relationship, in the same way that the Coastal Conservation League is led by a Gullah Geechee Low Country Woman, Faith River James, and is ably represented in Beaufort County by Jessie and Grant. And I appreciate their support and their help and their collaboration. So, this whole idea about trying to make the Coastal Conservation League into some sort of outside manipulator is so false, because they are integral members of our community, and they are part of creating the vision for what comes next. And finally, I just want to say that what we really need to be doing as a community is listening to the people on St. Helena who have supported the CPO back then in the 90s and continue to support it in 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. We have concluded public comments tonight. We will go on with our agenda. Number 10 is liaison and community reports from our council members. I'll start at this end.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Glover?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, there's, from the Natural Resource Committee, there are several items on the agenda for tonight. Item number 14 and 15, which deals with the abandonment of easements, requests that's coming before us. Also, items 16 and 17, I think 16 and 18 deals with a recommendation from both the Rural and Critical Land Board and the Green Space Committee to purchase Wigeon, North Wigeon. So, and then 17 on here deals with a permanent easement given to Beaufort Jasper Water Authority for utility easement. And then, the last, number 19 on there deals with Trotter Road Conservation, that's on the agenda for the night. I also announced that on May the 5th, at 6 o'clock, the Planning Commission will meet at 6 o'clock, and.
You know where they're gonna meet? I'm not sure. Where are they gonna meet? Because we've changed, the building's being renovated, Planning Commission, May 6?
They're still meeting there, they're meeting in a separate room.
Okay.
At Clearwater.
On Clearwater? On Clearwater Drive?
Yes, in building.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, and the last one, just want to announce here tonight that on May the 6th, right here at this library at 6 o'clock, the, I want to call it Recreation Commission, Recreation Pals?
Pals.
Right. The Director for Pals will be here to unveil the proposed facility for the Wesley Felix Center. So I want to welcome everybody to come out at that time to give your input into the design of that facility on, at the Wesley Felix compound, recreational compound. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Let's go to the people online. Councilman Passamit, do you have any reports tonight? Or Councilman McKellen or Mr. Cunningham? Councilman, anyone have any liaison reports that's online?
No, ma'am.
No? Anything from public facilities, Mr. Cunningham? No? All right, let's go down to Councilman Dawson. Any reports?
I'd just like to follow up on a comment Councilman Glover made as far as parks and rec is concerned. We've been discussing for months now the, the building of community centers and the Agnes Major Center and Sheldon Community, our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Eric Brown and our staff will be holding a meeting at the Elijah Washington Center and, in Sheldon Community, May 8th at 6:00 p.m. And the center is located at 211 on Page Point Road. So I just want to put that out there for public information.
All right, thank you, Councilman Dawson. Councilman Bartholomew.
Don't really have anything from community services or the other liaisons, the other committees, but I will say recently, the city, city of Beaufort moved forward with the finalizing the waterfront committee. And I was appointed on that, thank you. And if y'all have any ideas, anything we can do to help improve that area and move the repairs forward, please let me know and I'll take that to the meeting.
And how often are you meeting, like?
I don't think the first meetings even been set yet. No.
Okay, thank you. All right, and, and Vice Chairman, Tab?
So first, I want to comment, we had over 50 people at chat with council this week. Mr. Glover, Ms. Howard, myself, Mr. Bartholomew were there. It was a really good back and forth, listening to people. I do appreciate everybody that came. It was at Beaufort Library. We, I attended Earth Day at Buckwalter Rec Center, and I want to recognize Trash Terminators, I don't know who they are, but they had special lunches. So I, that's all I can tell you. Board of Education, I, I think everyone should stay abreast of what they do, so I usually give a report. They had some items that came out of executive session for things at McCracken School, MC Riley, Bluffton High School, and Ladies Island Elementary School. And then the CFO, Tanya Crosby, gave a preliminary budget presentation for fiscal year 26. They're going to make a good jump in teacher staffs and staff salaries. We have to raise the bar to keep good people. They will be presenting to council coming up. They are going to have a, a budget session at Bluffton High School tomorrow night, 6:00 p.m., and Beaufort High School, I'm sorry, the 30th at 6:00 p.m. Yep, 30th. And Beaufort High School, the 1st at 6:00 p.m. I encourage everyone to go to hear how they build the budget. It is not an easy task, as Mr. Smith will tell you. You're trying to work within the village and get good teachers, service children. So those two meetings are set, and they will be coming to County Council on the 19th of May for their first reading. Tomorrow night, we do have a joint meeting with Beaufort School District. It is at their Educational Service Center on Mink Point Road.
I think this is the first.
Yeah, the first time. At 6:00 p.m., and the agenda's online. So there is an agenda. It was created with the council and the school board, and I think it's gonna be very exciting, so I appreciate being invited. Thank you.
Hey, I was, that's great. And then also, I think some of you met with the town of Port Royal and the city of Beaufort? That was Thursday?
We did. Yes, Paula, Mr. Moore, and myself met with city of Beaufort and Port Royal. There were a couple of presentations, Second Helpings, Palmetto Breeze, but I was most impressed with their Beaufort Royal Fire Department, Port Royal Fire Department, the ISO Class 1, if I remember that right, which is a big honor. So congrats to Beaufort, Port Royal Fire Department, great job.
Okay. We do not have anything for the consent agenda tonight, is that correct? Okay. Moving forward, we're gonna start doing our readings for our ordinances, and I'll turn it over to our Vice Chairman, Tavernet.
If anyone wants to leave before I drone on, I won't be offended.
Now, now would be your opportunity.
Okay, ordinance 2025/20 is an ordinance to amend Beaufort County's budget ordinance for fiscal year 2025, to amend Section 3, County Operations Revenue, Paragraph B, Capital Improvement Fund, and Section 4, County Operations Appropriation, Paragraph B, Capital Improvement Fund, and add Appendix A and Appendix B to the fiscal year 2025 budget. This is a public hearing. The vote at the first reading on April 14th was 10-0. So can I have a motion from council to approve the ordinance as read?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Glover, a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Bartholomew? This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak or have a question for our CFO, Mrs. Harriet? Miss Harriet, anyone have a question for her? She went over this last time, but she's here, ready to go. Counsel? Appreciate your work, you can get off easy, but you might as well stay there for the next one.
I got the next one, too.
Yeah, stay for the next one.
Right.
Can I have a, we've already motioned, and second all in favor of this ordinance as read? Online, Mr. Passamit? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2025/21 is an ordinance to repeal ordinance 2021/24, which established a solid waste and recycling enterprise system. This is a public hearing, the vote at first reading on April 14th was 10-0. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance as read?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, and a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Harriet, do you want to say anything about this? I mean, stormwater is a hot topic.
It's solid waste.
Oh, solid waste.
Not taking back stormwater at all. This is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. We're just repealing the ordinance because we will be moving the solid waste department back into the general fund as a part of your fiscal year 26 budget.
Could you explain for the public, what is an enterprise fund?
An enterprise fund is a type of proprietary funds that is where governments have business-type activities.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Now is your time, come forward. Okay, I will close the public hearing for County Council, all in favor of this motion as read? All right, we're unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harriet. 2025/23, 22 rather, is an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a drainage easement, TMS R 510 007 000 0116 000. The vote at the first reading of council on April 14th was 10-0. This is a public hearing. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance as read?
Madam Chairman, I will, I will motion that also would like to point out that this abandonment of drainage easement is actually on the Hilton Head side of the county.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Was that a motion?
Yep, he made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew will second. This is a public hearing, anyone from the public wish to speak on this drainage easement abandonment?
Is the staff here to, to speak on it?
I mean, Jared can, he's already, but you want him to speak on it?
I think, is Larry, you all comfortable with it? Okay. That's all right, thank you.
And just for the public to know, Jared has, they've already presented this in committee and before, so, but if anyone needs a question, we can answer it. All right, it's been motioned and seconded, all in favor of this ordinance as read? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 2025/23 is an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of an easement encumbering property identified as TMS number R 300 035 00A 0004 0000. And R 300 035 00A 0005 0000. The vote at our first reading, April 14th, was 10-0. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. This is a public hearing, does anyone from the public wish to speak on the abandonment of this easement? I could see you're all thrilled and excited, but, okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to note that this is on St. Helena Island, and the land's in area, and it's couple, it's two parcels of property that gave us the easement for drainage, but the rest of the neighbors did not. So the county is basically abandoning the easement because the other neighbors did not want to play, so.
Thank you for that explanation. All right, all in favor of approving the ordinance as read? Raise your hand, please. Okay, thank you much. Okay, now we're on ordinance for first reading, there were no second reading. 2025/24 is an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of tax map serial numbers, TMS R 600 007 000 001A 000. Oh my gosh, there's a whole lot more. Do I have to read all these, Mr. Howard? Okay, and all? Because there's lots of zeros here, okay. And it's in the backup document. And they are also known as North Wigeon Fee. This is a public hearing, and so can I have a motion to accept the ordinance as read? To approve it?
So moved.
Mr. Bartholomew?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Glover. Would you like to speak on it? Come forward. Can we put it up there so people can see where it is? That might be helpful, thank you so much. This is part of the North, the Wigeon Point and so on, we talked about.
Yes, the entirety of North Wigeon, which is a little hummock off of Highway 170 at the base of Broad River Bridge. It adds visual contiguity to your Wigeon Point Preserve, which was one of your first rural and critical projects, and was also a partnership with Rural and Critical and the State Conservation Bank. This opportunity to purchase North Wigeon extends that partnership. There's grant funding in place to meet the purchase price from the Conservation Bank and from Green Space, so you'll see this again on your agenda. But it also consumes, it is the last project of the current iteration of the Rural and Critical Program. So it's a really high note to end the program on, and I think is as symbolic for the success of the Rural and Critical Program as it is important for public access and public benefit for all citizens in Beaufort, and honestly Jasper County, too, right there on the county line. So the Rural and Critical Board recommended the purchase unanimously, as did the Natural Resources Committee, and we look forward to presenting this to you at first reading, second reading, and third reading, and then adding to Wigeon Point Preserve for all of Beaufort to enjoy. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Anybody have a question from council?
I'd just like to comment, it's kind of bittersweet, but it's a good way to conclude the Rural and Critical lands program.
It is, absolutely.
This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public wish to speak on this?
Kate, can you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, Kate Schaefer, with the Open Land Trust. We are the consultants for the Rural and Critical Program. And yes, Chairwoman Howard, while it is the end of the Rural and Critical Program, again, you'll see it on the agenda again, because this is a partnership with the Green Space Program, and I have all the faith that the Green Space Program, their board and staff will continue to support thoughtful land conservation in this region, and I'm immensely grateful to pass the baton, so, thank you.
And I think the public should really know that your group and Green Space work hand-in-hand to try to multiply the dollars. I always know, Mr. McShane says, for every dollar, we try to get four. So I think that's really important.
Yes, I write a lot of grant applications for Green Space funding, state funding, federal funding, and if you have any ideas for other funding sources, we can be creative and innovative together. That is part of the, the secret sauce here in coastal South Carolina, to protect more land at greater efficiency to the taxpayer and a huge benefit to the public, so thank you.
And you've been very successful.
Yes.
Yes. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? All right, hearing no one from the public, I would like a vote to approve this ordinance as read. All in favor? We are unanimous, thank you. One more, 2025/25 is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a permanent utility easement for a portion of right-of-way owned by Beaufort County known as Palmetto Bluff Road, located in Bluffton Township. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Howard, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Anyone, Jared, do you want to present on this one? This is our first reading, so maybe explain this to people. Thank you, Mr. Fralix.
Absolutely, thank you. So this is a road that we own in Palmetto Bluff, New Riverside. It's old Palmetto Bluff Road, or Palmetto Bluff Road. And Beaufort Jasper is seeking an easement inside of our right-of-way for them to construct a sewer line as part of a greater project in Stony Creek area. So this will be a permanent easement, which will give them the opportunity to, one, construct it, then maintain the line that they install within the right-of-way.
Thank you. Any questions from council? This is a public hearing, yes. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? It's your last opportunity for the night. Okay, I'll close it. Let's take a vote, all in favor of this ordinance as read? All right, thank you. That concludes it, Mrs. Chairman.
Okay, we're on number 18, under resolutions. This is number 202521. This is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the documents necessary and to provide funds to contribute to the procurement by Beaufort County for fee simple real property located in unincorporated Beaufort County known as the North Wigeon Track. And there is a series of PIN numbers with our county attorney's approval, I will not go through those, to hear a motion to approve this resolution to contribute to the procurement of North Wigeon Point.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
And we have a second. All in, we, the motion was made by Councilman Bartholomew and seconded by Councilman Dawson. All in favor by raise of hands, and that is unanimous. Number 19, 202520 is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the documents necessary and to provide funds to contribute to the procurement by the Open Land Trust for a conservation easement on the property located in unincorporated Beaufort County known as Trotters Loop. And then there are a series of several PIN numbers for that property. I have a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Councilman Bartholomew made the motion. Do we have a second? Second by Vice Chair Tavernet. All in favor by show of hands, and that is unanimous. When we adjourn, we did not adjourn from executive session, we are going to reconvene.
Madam Chairman.
But we need to adjourn this meeting.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn this?
Are we gonna have a need for something out of executive session?
Yes, but that's during the caucus meeting. You're gonna reconvene the caucus meeting.
We're gonna reconvene, but we can adjourn this meeting, so we can have a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we will reconvene the caucus meeting.
Before you adjourn, I didn't, I did not like how the sign-in sheet got stacked.
Yeah, we were, we're gonna work on that.
And so there was a lot of people here who may have wanted, wanted to speak. And if you could allow a few minutes for anybody who got a burning, something on there at this time, because it was basically stacked, so.
10 minutes?
10 minutes is fine.
You have to make a motion.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that will extend the meeting, the public session for 10 minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilman Dawson. All in favor by show of hands? Okay, was that?
Is that enough?
It was, it was a majority.
Okay. It's unanimous.
All right, so we, we can start back on the list, if that is what you think we should do. I mean, the next one is.
I think I, I heard enough from one side, you know, but is there someone else on there?
Is there anyone that's not Pine Islander CPO that wishes to speak?
That's a good point. Anyone?
This major didn't want to speak on anything other than.
Ms. Majors?
Oh, yes.
We did have Jerry Reeves, who was next on the list, but Jerry H. Reeves.
A lot of people left.
A lot of people left. Okay, and, and your name, please?
Good morning, I'm Daniel Connor, excuse me, good evening, Daniel Connolly. I was not on the list, but unfortunately, we've lost a, a number of the members that were hoping to speak, so.
And I'll call on you next, Ms. Majors, I promise, okay? Go ahead.
All right, Councilwoman Chairman, thank you very much for allowing us to stand up here. here. My name's Dan Connolly. I'm a senior firefighter with the Bluffton Township Fire District. I've been there since August 11th of 2008. Outside of my normal responsibilities as a firefighter there, I also oversee one of our retirement systems, and I'm the chairman of that committee. So because of that, I have a direct involvement with the chief of the district and some of the other members there outside of just being a fireman. Chief Bulwer has dedicated his life to serving Bluffton's residents and visitors for well over 30 years. He understands the importance of a well-equipped, trained, and professional fire department. He has championed initiatives to enhance our fire safety programs and community outreach efforts. These initiatives not only improve safety, but also strengthen the bond between the fire department and the residents of Bluffton. Chief Bulwer's vision for our fire district is clear and compelling, and it is one that aligns with the needs of our community. When Chief Bulwer was appointed department chief, he wished to step down from this 1% committee, which I thought originally was a little odd. Many departments have their chiefs sit on the committee in some requirement, depends on the type of entity they're set up as. I asked him why. He said the primary reason was to ensure there was a layer of separation between the district and those 1% funds that go in towards the retirement. These funds are vitally important to our membership, and he wanted to make sure there was no perception of conflict between the department funds and the 1% funds. Quite frequently, I'm in his office discussing 1% items and concerns, and his stance every single time is, what do the members of our district want? Without question. Every item that we have gets voted on as, by the department as a whole, then it gets approved by the fire association before any of those funds are spent. Every year since I've been involved, he wants to know how the voting went, not to pass judgment on individuals who have made it voted no or down on something, so that he has a high-level overview of where concerns may be within the district. And he uses this information to gauge support where we may need to change budget items within that. This one's going to be tough, I'm sorry. He truly cares about every single member of our district if they're one of his own family members. This couldn't have become more evident late last year on a Sunday afternoon. While on shift, Chief Rushing, who's my battalion chief here, received a phone call from one of our guys that was having a medical issue. We ended up rushing over to the station, found that the individual was being evaluated by Beaufort County EMS, and it was determined that he didn't need to be transported to the hospital at that time, but we drove him in the chief's vehicle to the ER. One of the first people there, this is a Sunday afternoon, was Chief Bulwer, and the look on his face, I don't know if you've ever had a sick family member, or a kid, or something tragic happen, was that same look. It, there's a pit in my stomach talking about it now. It's pretty painful. Unfortunately, the news wasn't positive. This individual needed to be transported to another facility for further care. He stayed with him that afternoon and evening until, Chief Bulwer stayed with him that afternoon and evening until he was transported to another facility and continues to check in on him. I'm sorry, my.
Yeah, they've run out of time.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
I really appreciate you allowing me to talk.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Connell, right? Was your last name?
Connolly.
Connolly.
Daniel Connolly.
Okay, Connolly, all right. All right, is there? Ms. Majors?
Thank you for allowing me to speak, council, and especially after hours, but I will have to say something about the CPO, if that's okay. You all know that.
Could we stop you?
My assignment is that we get a youth and community center on St. Helena Island. Now, I heard the downzoning, mentioning, trying to sweeten the pot, that they will build a center here on St. Helena Island. I am a person, I am unbought. I am, like I said, I'm on assignment by the Lord, and the Lord didn't say for them to build it, for the county to build it, because if they built the community center, who's going to maintain it? So I'm looking down the road, so even after all of you have left council, that we will build a state-of-the-art center on St. Helena Island that will be maintained by the county. And our children, especially, I saw those young people there, and my heart goes out to them because they're being deceived. Deception is in what they're saying, because they want all of us to believe that this is great for St. Helena Island. We do not need a golf course, but we do need a youth center on St. Helena Island. We need a youth center large enough where we can hold a meeting like this where we, you know, can extend it. So I'm looking forward to that as we do that, and I thank you all so very much. And I want to remind everybody that, and I wish I could say this while they were here because they had the green shirts, we have a nonprofit called the Beaufort County Youth Conference, and each year we have a conference, and this year is September 20th at USCB, and this is our 33rd year. And we do give shirts to our young people, and it's for middle and high school. So these are shirts that not only adults can wear, but our young people can wear with pride, and it will last them for years, and it'll always have a theme and a message, not only for the young people, but for the adults that will see it also. So I thank you, and please, we thank you for what you've done with the CPO, and please continue to do what you're doing. Bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Majors. All right, we have time for one more person, all right? Mr. Smith? Wait, are, let him, I think your subject is not related to Pine Island, correct, sir?
My, my, it's the representative.
Okay, come on, he can, let him come, Will, and then you can.
Well, my, my, I have the reference to Pine Island, but, but. So.
Do you have your name, please?
My name's Carson Stone.
Okay.
I'm rolling the card away. I'm a member of the Bluffton Township Fire District. I came out today to show some support for our fire department, its future, and our chief. It's a privilege to be able to live in the community that you serve. The fire department's very unique. Not everyone gets to do that, but because we do, it gives us a vested interest in the community that we live. Our kids live in that community. We are in that community daily. All the gentlemen that you see here, a lot of them didn't get time to speak today. They are here to show support. We all care about the future of our department, and that's why we came out today. I've not been involved with any investigation that's going on with Chief Bulwer, but I came out to, I've certainly felt the impact as a member of the department. I don't know any of the details. We're still waiting to hear any of the details on the investigation, but I'd like to speak about his character tonight. That was my intentions of coming out, and his intent. I've been with Bluffton for 12 years now. In my opinion, Chief Bulwer's always done what's best for the Bluffton Fire Department. He's been an advocate for the guys, an advocate for doing what's right. I think that they've got papers over here, a long list of things that he's done for all of us over the years, whether it's giving gifts and checking in on you when you have a kid, personal matters, but when it comes to hard matters also, I genuinely think that he makes decisions with the interest of the fire department first. It's not possible to get to a position like his without making a couple people upset along the way. It's going to happen. I've seen the credentials of a lot of people in this room. You've been leaders for a long time. I'm sure you understand, hard decisions, even when you make them correctly, they're going to create conflict within an organization, and you're going to get some complaints along the way. But the loudest people in the room don't always speak for the majority. Chief Bulwer's dedicated over 30 years of his life to our department. With the fire service, it's a lot different than a lot of other jobs. This is a place where he's lived here, he's worked here most of his adult life, and he's given a lot to the department and the community. He genuinely cares about the department, just like all of the gentlemen that came out today. We care about the future of our department that we live in, and we hope to leave a positive legacy when we're gone. A wrong decision's going to be made from time to time. It's, it's going to happen, right? In my opinion, it should be focused on the intent. If there's no malicious intent, a bad decision is being, just a byproduct of being a leader. You can't get every one of them right. So if there's been a wrong decision at some point, and there's some sort of infraction that's been made, the only thing that we ask is that whatever the penalty it is, it reflect the severity of the infraction, because at the end of the day, he's a man that we all respect, and right now, with not a lot of details being put out about this investigation, his reputation's certainly taking a hit. We feel it in the department, and it's tough when a guy that a lot of us respect a lot is having his reputation tarnished, and he's unable to defend himself because none of us really know what the details are of this. That was, that was pretty much it. Thank you for letting me speak. We appreciate you for opening up some more time to hear some of us and.
Thank you for staying. All right, our last, our last person is William Smith, and he is a member of the Beaufort County School Board, and we'll see you tomorrow night, too.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I just wanted to make this real quick. I just wanted to not leave here with this tonight. There was someone who, a kid told, I guess, I'm not sure if y'all have the sheet where there were some names written down, and there were some kids here apparently who wanted to speak about the St. Helena Library, and they were told that they weren't able to speak because of the Pine Island situation, and I'm not going to, I just want to take that off of me and put that on council. So if y'all would deal with that and figure out why weren't those kids able to speak, because one was trying to get to me, but I was in here, so I didn't get to the kid, and I felt bad, because maybe we could have made that happen, but I just want to put that on council. I'm not sure who the person was that told them that those kids could not speak, but this library is very important to kids in Pine Island. We don't want to make sure that we, as a public, that we never, ever do that again and tell kids that they can't speak when they want to speak about that.
There was someone who signed up, other people on the list, and we won't allow that again.
Okay.
They, they were, they were not the person. One person signed up, it looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven slots.
Wait, wait.
So we'll, we'll figure out a way to prevent that.
Yeah, yeah, please, thank you. And I appreciate, and I appreciate your delicacy and for hanging, hanging the voices.
If any one of those children, or I'm assuming they're young adults, wants to email council, they can.
Sure.
Okay, well.
We still want to hear from them.
Okay, well, I'll see how I can relay that message to those kids.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to go back into, to adjourn, no?
To adjourn.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Executive session.
I'll second.
All right, a motion to adjourn. All in favor adjourned this meeting?
I didn't hear second.
This meeting is adjourned, and we, now I need a motion to reconvene for caucus.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to reconvene for caucus. We have a second from Councilman Glover. All in favor of reconvening for caucus, executive session? All right, okay.
It's fall and time for sports fanatics to kick it into high gear. What else kicks off with sports? Tailgating. College parties and tailgating are a rite of passage, and students, in addition to being underage, are also at increased risk for alcohol abuse and becoming alcohol dependent. Binge drinking, day drinking, tailgating are all a risk. If you or someone you know has a problem with alcohol abuse or dependence, say something. Save a life, be safe, and enjoy game day. For more information, visit beaufortcountiesc.gov and click on Alcohol and Drug.
Do we want to wait and have our participants on screen?
They're on that one.
Oh, they're on that one. I apologize. Switched on me, okay. I would like to entertain a motion to be made of business coming out of executive session.
Madam Chair, I move that council suspend the appointment of Mr. Rick Crowe from his position as Commissioner on the Bluffton Township Fire District Board of Commissioners as a result of the actions he took in relation to a pending investigation of matters related to the Bluffton Township Fire District. If suspension, I'm sorry, the suspension, the term should be just, sorry, until such time as the investigation is declared to be completed or until such time as a permanent fire chief is hired, whichever occurs last, and this is effective immediately.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman Bartholomew. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a second by Vice Chairman Tavernick. Is there any discussion? No discussion online? All right, we're going to do this vote by show of hands. All in favor signify by raising your hand. And the two people online voted yes, and that is unanimous of the rest of us. There being no further business, we are now adjourned. Thank you.
Dale, good to see you. We've got a lot to talk about, and we're going to try to talk about, and all of this in a very small kind of presentation to the general public about what we want to do. If y'all remember, we started working on a new school resource officer opportunity last year, because we knew, and we have known, that trying to recruit law enforcement officers to be Class 1 certified, which is what the state required, you know, to be in our schools as school resource officers, which is a special, I think we all agree that that is really a special candidate that we consider to be that close in association to our kids.
Yes.
And, but we know the importance of the school resource officer program because of the safety factors it creates, not only in our schools, but with our, with our communities as well, because the school is a melting pot of the communities that we serve. So having that right person in that job and that role to provide security to our kids, leadership to our kids, and giving the confidence to the staff that work in the schools, I mean, it's important to find that right person. So it's difficult to find a Class 1, and a Class 1 law enforcement officer, for those that don't know, is one that goes to the academy for 12 weeks, spends 12 weeks, for the most part, in Columbia. We do some of the training here locally, but everything else has to be done in Columbia. And there are a lot of people that we're trying to attract to be school resource officers that really don't want to give up their life and their family to go to Columbia and go through boot camp to be a Class 1 law enforcement officer. So I had our training staff put together a training syllabus for a, what we call a Class 3, and it was a Class 3 designation for school resource officer. What that did is it allowed us to create a training syllabus that we could take a person, you know, of any age, and that we would bring them into law enforcement environment, you know, with Bluffton or Beaufort or Port Royal or Sheriff's Office, and we would train them here in Beaufort County. All of their training would be done right here. It would be eight weeks, maybe a little more than eight weeks of training. We would like to start this, our first class, we'd like to start it in June. That way, we can get them through the program and be ready for deployment when school starts in August. I think it's an awesome program. We sent the training syllabus to the academy that trains all of our law enforcement in South Carolina. They approved it with the blessing of the South Carolina Training Council. So we are ready to get this thing moving and get it started. And I think for us, we just need to kind of tell our citizens, you know, who are we looking for? The role is school resource officer. It's a Class 3 law enforcement designation. It's a uniformed position. It's an armed position. They have arrest powers, and they have all the powers of any other law enforcement officer on the school grounds that they're assigned to. So what do you think, Joe?
Sheriff, I think it's a great idea, and thank you for taking lead on this. We have four elementary schools in Bluffton that currently are not staffed by Class 3 or higher officers, and I think that this program is going to attract people to these positions, and it's going to provide more of a security blanket for our schools to include our elementary schools. So we're definitely excited about it. We're excited to be a part of it, so thank you.
Dale, who do we want to attract?
I think, we've got, we've got an enormous number of retired military folks here that are able to retire fairly young and may be looking for that job. They may have children in our schools, and with the, with the program that you were able to put together, they'll be home when their children are home, not in school. And, and I've always said, and you and I have had this conversation, Sheriff, we need to get into elementary school if we, if we wait until high schools, we're too late. So it's a great program. I'm glad that you took the lead on it. I'm excited to see if we can get some people in, but I really think the young retired we can get some people in, but I really think the young retired military people are, they're just made for this.
You know, and we've gone throughout our careers into county of Beaufort, and we've had conversation after conversation with different people that say, you know, I'm retired, I'd like to find something to do, and then you start talking to them, and they're retired teacher, retired law enforcement, retired fire department, retired military, retired bankers, retired, I mean, retired this, that, and the other, and they're still, still at an age that they could, they could do this job with no problem at all, of any kind. And those are the ones that I'd like to see. I'd like to see those that are still, that still feel like they can make a difference, that maybe have always looked at law enforcement as being a job, but because of the pay, and because of the, you know, the working conditions, and families, and all that, they just didn't wanna do it. But here is an opportunity to make $45,000 a year, starting pay, to work basically the schedule of the teaching and support staff of the school district, which is a pretty good schedule.
It is.
To have benefits, to be in the retirement system, and to be able to bring their maturity, their life experience, and, and, you know, to, to elementary school-age kids who will benefit greatly from just having that opportunity to socialize and be around these folks that bring a lot to the table. And I, we, in our communities, you take Bluffton, and Beaufort, and in the county, and then in Port Royal, those people are here.
They are.
And they're looking for things to do, and I could just think this is an awesome opportunity for them to, you know what, just do it, kinda like Nike, let's just do it. You know, I think it's, the training is, I think they'll enjoy the training, again, it's all done right here, they, they'll stay at home, they're sleeping their own bed, they 'll have their own pillow, and then they can come to training, and once they're certified, then they'll start the school year, August of this year. So, I mean, I know your community represents that opportunity as well.
Yes.
You know, so what else, what else you think this, this program's gonna do in totality for what we're trying to accomplish?
I think, I think this program, one, will be able to get us over the top. I think we'll be able to get, we'll be able to get a police officer in every school in Beaufort County, which is important.
A police officer, and I, and, you know, we've talked about this, there's a lot of training that goes along with this job.
There is.
You know, this is not a security officer.
No.
This is a law enforcement officer, that's gonna be well-trained in this, and I, I think that, at the end of the day, that's extremely important.
And I think with the young children targeting the retirees, whether they're retired teachers, retired military, is important. They've got the life experience for the, for the elementary schools, and to get that started off, so.
How many, how many openings do you have for this program?
For this program, we, we only have two currently, possibly a third coming on board.
I've got nine.
Joe's.
I have four.
So, I mean, in total, and here's the thing, it, it doesn't matter if you work at the city of Beaufort, or the town of Bluffton, or Port Royal, or for the Sheriff's Office, you know, we want you to come to work.
Yes.
In law enforcement, to be a Class 3 SRO. Doesn't matter where you go, doesn't matter who you're employed by, the pay's gonna be the same, the work environment's basically the same, there may be a difference in uniform that you wear at the school that you're assigned to, the pay, I mean, everything is gonna be basically the same. So all we want people to do is put their applications in, give us the opportunity to sit down and explain the program in detail, and if you really have an interest in it, then let's, let's get started. What do you think, Joe?
Yeah, and one thing that I wanna hit on is, this program is important, and the reason being is, none of our kids should feel afraid going to school, they should be going to school to learn and not caring about their safety. And what this does is this provides another layer of safety for all of our schools, especially the elementary schools. It also provides people with an opportunity to mentor these young men and women as they're coming up through the school system. And so, like the sheriff said, if you truly wanna make a difference, this is a position that you really, really will be making a difference.
I'm looking forward to it. I just hope the applications start pouring in, and if you get more than, than you need, and, and we need to go to Beaufort, or we need to go to the Sheriff's Office, or Port Royal, we just need, we need to put these people to work. We need to fill these vacancies, and let's make our schools in Beaufort County as safe as they possibly can.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think the uniqueness of this program, these officers will be trained by people that have children in these schools, they have the same desires, the outcomes that we're looking for, so I'm, I'm looking forward, looking forward to it.
Well, I mean, the great thing about it is that we are, we will be doing the training together.
Yes.
If you get, if you get, if you hire one or two, and you hire four, and, you know, and I can fill the nine that we need, we're all gonna be training together.
Yes.
So this is gonna be one training syllabus to benefit the school resource officer program. I mean, this is going to be, this, this program is for South Carolina as a whole. This is not just for Beaufort County, but I'm excited that we're gonna start this and initiate, you know, the SRO Class 3 position here in Beaufort County, and we're gonna show the state it works.
And the great thing about the training together, Sheriff, is you're creating a network before you even get started. So you're gonna know people from different schools, where if you come run into a problem, you have somebody else that you can call and get some advice, or talk to them about things going on in their school, and current trends that are happening in their school. So it's a great collaboration of all three departments in the entire county getting together, because having that network and people that you can rely on for additional advice is invaluable.
Well, I tell you what, I mean, I want, I want people to be able to, to make those phone calls, or go online and research, you know, just the, the Class 3 SRO through all agencies. So I think Lindsey, if we can, I mean, at this point, I think if we put that information on this video for Bluffton, Beaufort, Port Royal, and the Sheriff's Office, webpage and phone numbers, I think we'll, hopefully, we'll start getting calls.
Absolutely.
Does that sound good to y'all?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's get it done.